Good morning, everyone. We're going to go over the agenda. This is our pre-agenda meeting. Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll start off, a call to order by Chairman Acock, invocation by Vice Chairman Hardison, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Gurley. Then we have approval of minutes for November 17th, 23rd, December 1st, and 7th. Then we do have a discussion of agenda and any adjustment. And at this time, we would like to ask that a couple of things be added to the agenda. Number one would be under special presentation, which will be number five really, is discussion by Brenda Weiss, who is our Health Director, to discuss budget issues within the Health Department. So that would be number five under special presentation. And we also have a add-on with respect to moving our CARES funding that we would like to put under consent agenda, that we will put that as number 10. And once we go with the consent agenda, Allison will be able to explain number 10 to you and the memo. It's really just an accounting principle, trying to make sure we account our CARES funding correctly and we can get our audit done fairly quick. But that is all the changes that I have for the agenda this time.
Okay, we are... Trying to find where Davenport's at.
Oh, then we'll go to special presentations. There are under four under special presentations. Davenport is.
Okay. Is that going to be rather lengthy?
Yes, sir.
And did we discuss?
I think 10 to 15 minutes is what he was looking at.
Probably so. And then allow however much time the questions.
Okay, all right. So we're good, keep leaving it as four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But under special presentations, number one, a presentation of plaque to outgoing Register of Deeds, Ms. Judy Harrison. Number two, adoption, motion to adopt Resolution 2020-37, resolution awarding service weapon to First Sergeant Harvey Walls, and presentation of retirement plaque and service weapon. Number three is motion to approve agreement for disposition of working dog to Corporal Stephen Ash. And then number four will be the presentation by Davenport on debt financing options for ongoing capital projects. And again, as we just discussed, will be a number five, presentation by our Health Director, Brenda Weiss, to discuss budget issues at the Health Department.
Mr. Chairman, we had discussed in the pre-agenda staffing that we would probably do one, two, and three. Then should be at that time able to go into your public hearings?
I see, second, the meeting starts at nine and we've got a public hearing at nine and one at nine thirty.
Yes, sir. And it's fine as long as you don't start before. But the theory was to do the first three under special presentations, do your public hearings, then go back and do your presentations by Davenport and Dr. Weiss.
That's what I thought we would want to do.
And the public hearing that we do have at 9:00 a.m. is a public hearing to receive public comments on incentives for a ground lease with Stroking Racing Incorporated at the Wayne Executive Jetport for a 20-year term with options to renew. And Brandon Gray, who is our Airport Director, will be here for that discussion as well.
Be good because there were some clarification that I think some of us needed on that. So Brandon's going to be here to go over it.
Yes, sir.
That'd be good.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could inquire on that, there's been some discussion, Andrew, I think you've been involved with that, about possibly expanding that from two pads to more than two. Can we in any way address that with our public hearing of an option to expand that beyond the two?
Well, we could. I wasn't aware that that was being discussed. I was just aware of the two. But that's why I asked Brandon to be here at nine o'clock, so he can provide an update for everybody.
That was the clarification I wanted because I'm hearing two different stories.
I thought we needed one more. As far as for this situation.
Well, I'm just saying, in handling this, we had to wait until we had a public hearing. And they're ready to proceed on on at least two, but there may be more than two. So can we make some modifications here to allow the option if they want to go more than two?
You are. We didn't advertise only for two pads. We just advertised that there would be a lease for 20 years with 10-year options to renew. So if you wanted to expand that lease after the public hearing, you could if you wanted to. You're not limited to two pads.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we got the option and we're covered in the event that they want more than two.
You are.
Would you help me by drafting a motion that would allow me to incorporate that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, if you're okay, I'm going to have him draft the motion to give us coverage in the event that this company wants to expand more than two of the pads.
And you're going to, you make the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
And then after that public hearing, we do have another public hearing at nine thirty, public hearing to receive public comments on a proposed amendment to the Wayne County zoning map by rezoning 13.65 acres from residential ag to light industry in the Brogdon Township. And we can go with that now or we can do that in the public hearing with Barry.
With pleasure, the board. I only had, Mr. Chairman, I only have one question on that and that would be, if you could just clarify for us, this actually had been used for this purpose in the past, this property?
Yes, yes. This was rezoned or zoned light industry up until about 2017. And then it was rezoned to RA 30 at that point. So the request ended up being zoned back to light industry as it was before. Before it was used as a, I think a small sawmill is what it was before. Now the owner wants to operate a small granite shop there, so.
So there's no objections in the neighborhood?
No, we have advertised. We've sent notices to adjacent property owners. We have posted a sign on the property and we've advertised it in the paper and we've received no comments at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Then after that public hearing, Mr. Chairman, is there a Department of Committee?
Yes, the Department of Committee does have some recommendations.
Yes, sir. Do we go over that now or just?
And Mr. Gurley is the chairman of the Department of Committee.
Or just wait until nine o'clock to go over that?
And then under new business, we had a discussion and possible approval of a joint agreement for facilities used between Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, Wayne County Board of Education, and the County of Wayne. And this is on pages 33 and 36 of your agenda pack. With respect to this, this basically states that we're interested in the discussion. It's not committing us either way. We're not committing funding. But we are moving forward with the discussion to look at a very similar school of type of engineering for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base to start in the '22, '23 fiscal year. But there's a lot of details that has to be done. Right now, we don't know the cost. We do know that the number of students, I believe, is two...
Five hundred.
Oh, I don't even think they have the total number of students. But half of the students would be up from base and half of the students would be from the county. And it would be very similar to the Wayne School of Engineering.
But it's nine through 12, correct?
That is my understanding, yes, sir. So they do have a building on base that is very, very suitable for this type of use that's basically unoccupied and unused.
But we want to make it very clear that what we're doing today is just, it's an agreement to talk about it. There's absolutely nothing binding in this.
Yes, sir.
But I guess the Department of Defense just needed it to get this started. But there is no obligation today other than we're going to talk about it in the future. I mean, at some point, there'll be some dollars involved. But right now, we don't know enough about it to commit to anything other than talking about it.
Yes, sir.
Well, what does the agreement say in them?
It gives us the authority to move forward with the discussion. That, you know, it's basically that all parties think it's a good idea to move forward. Is that a very simple way to say it, Mr. Attorney?
But the reason I wanted it very clear that we just, this is just for talking because there's been no money involved and you know who you're going to come to for money. So I want that very clear that, you know. I don't mind, I don't have a problem with talking about it. But we're not going to sign anything binding that's other than discussion.
There's a lot of details that have to be worked out on this. There really is.
So we just are agreeing in principle for discussions to finalize the agreement. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this one will need a pre-audit statement on.
It'll have to have a pre-audit statement, okay.
And there are still some issues that our attorney does have. There's some minor issues. But if you do want to proceed with this, it would be based upon final approval by our county attorney.
Did the Department of Defense bring this to us or was this something?
It really came from the base, yes, sir.
Came from the base, okay.
Yes, sir.
And is this the first time in any other military cities that they have a joint school like this or is this going to be the first one?
I think they've had it in other places. But I think most of it is Department of Justice or Department of Defense schools that they run on base. But I think there's models out like this in other areas, yes, sir.
Because I've never heard of it. So that's what I was wondering, like, this is, seems like it's kind of sort of groundbreaking. So I want a lot of information on it because you're mixing civilian kids with military kids.
Yes, sir.
A lot going on there.
And how do you get the civilian kids on base and transportation and lunch and those type? There's a lot of details that have to be worked out, yes, sir.
I mean, because if you join the military, you join the military with certain benefits. And if you're civilian, you don't get those benefits. So I'm wondering how they're going to mix kids, civilian kids, with those military kids. It's a lot of questions I have about this. So I'm not, if it's just a conversation, I don't have a problem. But I mean, I think that, you know, it's going to be a lot of things, from finances all the way down to the legal.
Yes, sir. They're looking at maybe doing this in the '22, '23 fiscal year. So there is time that we have to get all the details worked out. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, maybe it's just me and my old age in my hearing, but I'm having some difficulty with the Plexiglas and being able to hear what my fellow commissioners are saying. So is there any way we could possibly maybe turn up the volume on the speakers so that we could hear each other?
We checked on that yesterday. There's some feedback issues by turning it up since we are taping.
Well, then maybe if we'll just try to move our microphones a little closer because I could not understand anything that Commissioner Foster was saying.
Maybe I had it a little away from me, so I'll turn it in a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Then next, we have our consent agenda. Number one is applications for elderly or disabled exclusion, which has been recommended and approved, or recommended by staff for approval. Number two, applications for disabled veteran exclusion, which has been reviewed and recommended for approval by staff. Number three, application for property tax exclusion, which has been reviewed and recommended for approval by staff. Number four, application for present use value, which has been recommended for approval by staff. And number five, our wonderful budget amendments. And I'll turn that over to Allison.
Okay, your both amendments begin on page 66. And just to give a little background, you'll see that they have numbers assigned to them at the top. And so typically, I'll go through and just go in sequential order and the departments also listed sort of towards the top as well. But if you have any questions, please just feel free to stop me. Our first budget amendment is to reappropriate $30,319.14 for our Maxwell Center. This is capital outlay funds that were not spent at year end. They were originally budgeted for, I believe it was a washer and dryer. But we're having some issues getting connectivity to those. And so they've not been able to work that out. I think there was some discussion about reappropriating this to build a grill area to allow for outdoor events at the Maxwell Center and provide some additional ways of catering opportunities there. So this would be bringing that money forward from June 30 into the new year to spend for that.
And if you remember, this is where we were trying to do our laundry in-house at the Maxwell Center. The costs associated in trying to find a place we were looking for storage was just not feasible to do at this time. One of the things James has done as well is found another laundry service, which has greatly reduced the price of laundry. So we feel like that the washer and dryer is not needed. So if you do reappropriate these funds, we will not be coming back to you in six months and asking for a washer and dryer for the Maxwell Center. But part of the discussion for the pig cook picker or pig grill area is that if you truly want a Wayne County experience, you need to be able to grill a pig. You know, you need to be able to have a hog on site that you can do. And that's one thing that we feel like will help upsell some of the events at the Maxwell Center as well.
Mr. Chairman, I suppose that brings up a number of questions. One would be, are we spending $30,000 on a pig cooker?
No, sir. We're, that, we don't have a cost yet, but this is just what was in the washer and dryer, what was set aside, that it would be much less than that.
Well, then I have a problem with that because if you in fact are designating those dollars for that use, it's kind of hard to have any checks and balances to make sure we don't spend the entire $30,000 on a pig cooker.
I promise you will not spend $30,000 on a pig cooker. You know, we will, we will keep you informed, but...
I just think the more prudent thing would be, and just my opinion, and that is that he gets the estimates in regards to the cost of the pig cooker and then he brings to us a budget amendment, which would be included in regards to the $4,348, whatever the cost is, rather than just transferring over the $30,000.
We'll be more than happy to do that. I think probably the biggest thing we wanted to do is to at least float the idea past you to see if spending money on a pig.
Oh, I don't have a problem with it. Just the way you're going about it. You're leaving it open.
Well, we can remove this budget amendment and if the board is okay, and we will come back with a plan and exact dollars. But we want to make sure that we haven't had this discussion in a while since Commissioner Bell was here.
You're going to have a designated area is what you're saying, not one on wheels.
Right.
Because if it gets on wheels, you will never get...
This is, this is a permanent fenced-in area. This is not just going down to Demos and buy a pig cooker. I mean, this, but I agree with Commissioner Doherty. We need a little more detail on this.
Well, and we'll be more than happy to do that. But I think the first thing we want to make sure that we haven't had this discussion in a while is that we had kind of a head nod to go ahead and say, hey, if you do all the work to get to this point, we'll be, you know, we'll approve the budget amendment.
Why can't we just leave the money where it's at for right now until we get more information?
We can, we can, we can remove the budget amendment at this time.
Okay.
If that's okay.
So what's page 76?
Commissioner Bell was going to call it the Craig Honeycutt Memorial Pig Cooker.
That's one reason we're delaying.
One of the biggest things I wanted at the Maxwell Center, so. But thank y'all. We'll remove that budget amendment, 76.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so your next budget amendment is on page 68. And I will also explain, there's usually a memo attached to each budget amendment from the department head so that you have some background on the request. But this budget amendment is for the Social Services. They've actually received, they had a June adjustment to their funding authorization from the state. And sometimes this does happen that, you know, we receive authorizations and then they get a slight adjustment to that funding. So they decreased those allocations by the amount of $16,588.91. And that was all state funding.
The state decreased it?
Yes, sir. That was for direct service allocations for the Crisis Intervention Program. And honestly, I think it's probably one of those things where it was just a carry forward, where it might have, it might have been a year-end timing issue. And so it was probably brought forward into the new year or they readjusted their funding for the new year.
Well, since the state decreased it, does that mean that we've got to fund it or it's just going to go away?
No, sir. It, my, it was probably just not spent. I can, I mean, I can get some more information from Vicky Hill if you'd like. But typically, they spend exactly what they get from the state. So that is very closely monitored. So I don't, I don't think that that would have been the case. But I can certainly double check with Vicky Hill, their finance officer or budget officer. Just to confirm. For the Sheriff's Office on page 70, they have received an additional $1,750 in concealed weapons fees. So that is being appropriated. That is actually going to be used for a monthly processing fee that they are charged by the state for that program. This is, this is basically a usage fee to operate the concealed weapons program. For the Sheriff's Office on page 72, we are appropriating some insurance monies for $2,113.25. This was for damage done to a vehicle accident, the Sheriff's Office. I believe it was a deer accident. On page 74, for the Sheriff's Office, they have received $137.30 in Controlled Substance Tax Funds. These are funds received from the Department of Revenue and they are very, they have to be appropriated in specific line items for very specific purposes. For the Sheriff's Office on page 76, they are requesting to transfer $13,700 for maintenance and repairs equipment to capital outlay. And actually, the money is coming from facilities. There was a generator budgeted for the detention center that was budgeted in the original budget. But there is a transfer switch that was not budgeted along with that. And Kendall, our facilities director, I think, had some lapsed funds in his repairs and maintenance line item. So we're requesting to use that so that they can complete that project. On page 78, for Wayne Community College, this is basically sorting out some of the details of the position for existing industry specialists that Tiffany has. She's been moved, as you know, from the county employment to Wayne Community. But the county is paying for that salary. So we are incorporating it into the expense money that we give the county, the community college. And we pay that to them over 112. So they get paid once a month current expense funds and it covers various things that the county's agreed to help pay for, like salaries, benefits, repairs and maintenance, things like that. So it's basically just increasing their allotment for Tiffany's salary. Is there any questions on that?
And if you remember, this is what our agreement was moving forward with the GTP. We wanted to make sure that we had the existing industry person here in the county. We transferred that position over to Wayne Community College to make sure we still had that position here or work inside the county.
Hey, come out and give the CDA funds, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, we're good to move on? All right, for, on page 80, for the jet port, there is a request to reallocate funds from repairs and maintenance operational line item for salaries and fringes to adjust employee salaries as requested by the jet port advisory board. On page 81, for services on aging, this is a request to appropriate ECC, which is our Eastern Carolina Council, CARES Act grant funding. And this is in addition to what the county has received. So some of you have seen these budget amendments where departments have received supplemental CARES money and it's through different agencies, through different departments. So this is another one of those grants that is coming through the Eastern Carolina Council. And that is all I have for you. And we will remove budget number 76 from the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some questions in regards to this CARES funding on the services of the agent. How are they spending that money?
So they are spending it, if you look at the budget amendment, there's several breakouts here. And they've got it split out into the respite program, senior center operations, in-home aid, information and operations, and group day respite. And then the FCSP, I'm trying to remember what that is.
I mean, this is about as plain as mud. I mean, I don't have any idea what those particular expenditures would be for. And you're talking about a $69,444 for a senior center operations?
It says in-home aid.
The what now?
It says in-home aid. It says aid, but it says in-home aid.
That'd be $7,000 for in-home aid. The way I'm looking at it.
Yeah, in-home aid, $7,000.
But the senior center operations, increased expenditures of $69,000. Well, we already have it in the budget to pay for the operations of the senior center. So what are they spending the $69,000 for?
Well, I can, if you would like, I could get, we could get Paula to send us a further breakdown.
Well...
I think, I think it's more of a revenue than it is an expenditure.
So are you, am I understanding that that actually would be coming to the county to offset our expenditures?
That is my understanding. That is my understanding.
Well, if that's the case, I'm fine with that. But I just don't want them to have an extra $69,000.
They don't have $70,000 to just to go.
Well, that's the way it looks.
Yes, sir. We, they won't have $70,000 to go to town with, we promise that.
So it will...
We'll clarify that. But it's my understanding that that's CARES funding coming in that we're, like we have on other CARES funding, that it's a reimbursement back to us for costs associated due to COVID.
We just need some clarification. Not only on this one, but we've, you know, we've had other budget amendments to, you know, Allison does a good job on clarifying it. But, you know, at some point, the department head has got to have some clarification to give to Allison so she can pass it on to us.
Yes, sir.
So for this one, and I'm not sure, do you know if this one has a, some of these have December 31 deadline. I don't know if this one does or not.
I don't know either.
Okay. So we will call and find out about that one. For social services, I mean, they, they did reduce their expenditures. So I don't, I don't think in the end we were actually out that money. If, if we had to take it out of our fund balance, we would have had to make an adjustment to fund balance to cover that.
Okay.
Does that make sense on the DSS? Okay.
So if I'm reading this correctly, increase is what will be coming in. This will be coming back. Decrease is what will be going out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so just making, just trying to simplify some things.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So do I need to keep the services on aging on the agenda? Do you want me to-
I just need to know that we're reimbursing the county-
Okay.
-for these expenditures.
And I'm not 100% sure about that, so I'm not comfortable taking that.
That's my understanding, but again, I'm not 100, not 100%, but that's my understanding, that with the CARES dollars, it's reimbursement that is coming back to us for that cost, back to the county.
We're looking at closer to $100,000 here. I mean, we keep looking at 69, but you add them all up together.
Like 94, 94,000. But, I mean, just following what you said, basic, with the increase and decrease, I mean, it would be coming back in. So it's not something that's taken away from us. It's what we've already spent on taking care of our agent in this capacity, and that's money that we're getting, coming back in. Am I correct on that?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
That's our understanding.
Directly from through ECC, COVID funding, typically services on aging.
So it's got to be-
Okay. And then, after our budget amendment, number six, motion to establish a public hearing on January 5th, that should be, I guess, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioner's meeting room to receive public comments on a request to rezone 1.22 acres at 439 and 453 Ruskin Road from residential ag to light industry, as recommended by the planning department. And I'll turn that to Barry.
All right, this is another rezoning request, and unlike the previous one, this is just the start of the process before you. We're just asking that you schedule a public hearing for January 5th so that we can advertise, post the property and so forth, to give people an opportunity to come. This is just north of, or not far from Georgia Pacific, if you're familiar with that area. It is about a little over half a mile from them on Ruskin Road. Ruskin Road, if you go south on Ruskin Road, extends on down to Georgia Pacific, the back side of Georgia Pacific. But the gentleman, the applicant is requesting that rezoning. He does have a small trucking business. Of course, it is a straight rezoning, so you have to consider all the uses, but because it is a small property, that in itself limits what can be done there. But he does have a small trucking business. He wants to locate on that property. But with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I think you mentioned before, Barry, that you want me to have run around this area.
Well, there is one house, one property away, or there's two properties away. It's about 250 feet, but that house has a trucking business behind it as well. So they do operate a trucking business off of that property. But that is the nearest one, otherwise there are no other homes directly around this property.
And just clarification to the newer board members, when we get something like this, and it's the planning board, which is appointed by us, they do, Barry and the planning board does the legwork, I mean, because there's not much that Barry and the planning department has to do to verify all of this. And the planning board, they don't have the authority to say yes or no, but their job is to, when it comes to us, to have already had the legwork done. Is that basically, so, you know, but now that doesn't necessarily mean just because the planning board approves it that we, because there've been a time or two that we still had questions and they had to go back to the planning board. But normally, when something comes from the planning board, it's thoroughly been looked into, just for y'all's information.
And I should have mentioned, the planning board did recommend approval for this.
Right.
Next, number seven, is motion to approve voting delegate for the North Carolina Association and County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference, and that is on page 90. And I believe Vice Chairman Hartson is being recommended for that voting delegate.
Yes, sir.
And you was last, you was back at that?
I was off. Yes, ma'am. And then, number eight, motion to approve easement between the County of Wayne and Piedmont Natural Gas for Park East property, and I want to turn that over to Andrew.
Good morning again. This is a easement out at Park East. Mark Pope negotiated this, but he was unable to be here today, so I told him I'd fill the board in. So your existing shell building that we actually just constructed, if you walk out of the shell building and then to the right, it's over on the cul-de-sac, down, a little bit further down the road. So WCAA owns some property on the, closer to the dealerships, and then the county owns all the property in the back. So this is a gas line that Piedmont is wanting to run, coming down the road, and then run natural gas out to the entire park. Kendall, our facilities director, has reviewed this. He was satisfied with it. So was Mark. I was told this isn't going to affect any development on any of our parcels out there, so it would actually add value to it. It's a little unclear from the map that's in your agenda packet, but the dotted portion is actually a temporary easement. The only permanent easement would be those diagonal lines, so it's actually a pretty small portion that we're giving to Piedmont. Mark and I did reach out to Piedmont regarding building a driveway over this, because obviously if you look at it, it looks like we're separating the whole parcel out. So if we go to sell it, somebody's going to have some problem, you know, putting a driveway over it. They said that that would be fine, you can build a driveway over it, so it's not going to be landlocked. All that needs to happen is we have to reach out to the local Piedmont agent, and they approved the driveway and the sign and everything like that. So what Mark suggested is that we actually go forward with this. When we go to actually sell the property to a new developer, we beforehand, before we sell that, we go to Piedmont, get the okay on the driveway ahead of time. So I know there were some concerns about whether or not this would landlock the property for future development, and that's not the case.
This is the largest line that's coming off of Thoroughfare Road, correct?
It is, yeah. Just right, so it's right there back behind the railroad track.
Right, toward Water Tower, yeah.
Yep, it is.
Ms. Chairman, everybody has an opinion, I suppose, and I like to express mine. But if I were doing this, if I owned this piece of property, and I was in fact selling an easement, which basically you are in essence separating off any egress, ingress or egress, because you have given the entire border of that property, you are giving an easement. Now, that leaves the control over to Piedmont of actually giving us a driveway access. I would handle that on the front end and saying, I will give you this easement, I'll sell you this easement, but there's a condition, and that is I in fact have the right of ingress and egress. That way, I'm in control in the very beginning. Now, I understand that Mark wants to just go ahead and approve this, and then deal with Piedmont at some point in the future. But what if they all of a sudden withhold that ingress and egress, and we're trying to land an industry on this property? I'm just saying, I would handle it on the front end. I would not leave that control to Piedmont at some time in the future, because how are you going to get across and use that property if they withhold that ingress and egress?
And there is some language in the easement itself- That would allow us, it states that Piedmont cannot unreasonably withhold any, you know, permission for the driveway. We can beef that language up a little bit if the board wants.
We do have an email from them in writing that states that they-
Y'all are trusting, I swear you are. Okay, I would just like it beefed up as much as we can.
And I know, last I heard, they wanted to start construction in January, so we can, if you want, we could make this condition for this approval contingent on adding that language to the easement and sort that out.
This is the same line, if I'm correct, is that's actually extending through the egress road that we're putting in for the-
It is, and if you recall, WCAA owns that lot that's adjoining AAR out in the park, and WCAA already sold an easement, I believe, what, maybe two months ago, and they've already gotten paid for their easement. So Mark's worked with them to make sure that it's going to run right down the road, it's not going to affect that new road that's going to loop around that DOT is working on right now.
This property is actually behind Park Imports or whatever.
Yep.
Right, but kind of aside, fake Dawson. So this is the one at the very back of that cul-de-sac over there.
It adjoins the railroad way back at the end of that cul-de-sac.
And I do point that out, and that is, this is one of the few lots that we have at Park East that actually is adjoining the railroad. For a railroad spur coming off of that, I mean, that's a valuable lot. It's a very valuable lot. And I just don't want us hindered in the future by being able to go across that easement that we gave. And just also keep in mind now, Piedmont's putting this gas line in, they're not putting it in just for the heck of it, they're putting it in so they can sell gas to somebody.
Let's go into, if I understand, this is the one that's actually, when it's in conjunction with the Royal Avenue Road straightening deal, that's the reason I put it in.
I think that's right.
But look, if they, the railroad is the strongest organization there is, I mean, they ain't got a problem with it, I mean, you know, it's kind of a, anyway.
Yeah, just beef up that ingress and egress.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
And, thanks Andrew. And number nine is motion to establish a public hearing on January 5th, 2021, at 9 a.m. in the Commissioner's meeting room in Wayne County Courthouse to receive public comments on proposed incentives for Project Daffodil. And again, this is our economic incentive project with, in Fremont, and the name has just escaped me.
Sanctuary Systems.
Sanctuary Systems, thank you. The PP's, we had the announcement at the site this week, and I do appreciate, or last week, and I appreciate the board showing up and supporting that as well. And then, number 10, discussion on CARES funding reallocation. Allison did give you a memo, and I'll turn that over to Allison.
Okay, if you're okay with it, before I get into that, I have received some additional information on services on aging, that that is not a December 31 cutoff. So if you all would like to pull this from the agenda, I can request from the department manager to provide some additional information.
What item was that again?
That is number 180, your services on aging budget amendment. Is that what, is that what the board would like to do?
If you could just clarify for us that you, we're just reimbursing the county, and they're not spending those funds on their own.
I, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Doughty, I'm not comfortable telling you that, because I don't, I haven't talked to her, and I would not want to tell you that, and then that'd be incorrect information.
Can you speak to her and report back to us for our 9 o'clock meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
And if not, if not, then we can pull it.
We can't, we have till September 30th of next year. So this one is not December 30th cutoff.
Okay. I just don't want to give them an extra 100 grand to go spend like they want to, anyway.
Okay, so for item number 10, what I'm requesting, and I'll give a little bit of background, so we received CARES funding that was allocated from the feds down to the state, and then the state allocated it to the counties. We received a total of a little over $4.6 million. Of that amount, we were required to allocate 25% to municipalities, but that was provided, they give us a spending plan by September 1st. And of the plans received for the municipality, the counties allocated a total of $1,55,702 to the city of Goldsboro, the towns of Pikeville, Fremont, and Mount Olive. An additional $200,000 was appropriated to United Way to manage a community-based program.
How much you say?
$200,000.
On the back page, it just-
Oh, is it? I don't know.
And the remaining funds were allocated to ineligible FEMA expenditures, emergency sick leave, and eligible payroll. So that is the way the funding plan was originally allocated when this was brought to you back in, I believe it was September. What I am requesting today is not to change any allocations to the municipalities, not to change any allocation to the United Way. What I'm requesting is that we move categories where we had ineligible FEMA expenditures, emergency sick leave, and move it all to eligible payroll. The reason I am requesting this is we're going to spend these funds regardless of whether FEMA reimburses us, because we have to put up petitions, we have to buy masks and things like that, and we're going to get as much as we can back from FEMA. But NC Pro, which is North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office, is the ones, they have kind of been guiding us on how to spend these CARES funding. And they have highly encouraged us to use as much as we can for payroll, because of the way the Treasury guidance gives you sort of documentation to justify these expenditures. And for audit purposes, it is much, much easier to claim these payroll expenditures. And so, we're just, like I said, we're not changing anything we're giving to municipalities or the United Way, it's all internal expenditures. And I'm just asking that we be able to reallocate on that report where we're putting, where we're putting those funds. So we will request back a majority of our county funds for payroll expenditures, and any of the other stuff, like the emergency sick leave and FEMA, that's all got to be paid anyway, and we're going to just try to get as much as we can back from FEMA. Does that, does that make sense? Okay. This is just, it's much easier, because there's so much ambiguity in some of this CARES funding. I don't want to risk coming back a year later and something being unapproved, and us have to pay back money, and when they're telling us, you can do it for payroll and it's easy, I would just rather grab the low-hanging fruit, if that's okay with you all. Okay, are there any questions on that?
And also, the module business will help us clarify our audit and get that, our audit done and in time.
Right.
And so, these are just some really easy things we can do to move the audit forward as well.
Ms. Chairman, just a little complicated, but-
Okay.
The 200 and the 100, you were saying you actually allocated that over for emergency sick leave, and how did you allocate that?
So whenever we presented in September, we took an estimate of what we thought that sick leave would be, and we took an estimate of what we thought our FEMA ineligible expenditures would be, and that's how we came to that 200,000 and the 100,000.
And you're just flipping it over just all-
Right, right.
Okay, all right, good, yep, okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
And then, that's the last item under consent agenda. Then we'll have public comments, county managers' report, board of commissioners' committee reports, public comments.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This regard is there.
A closed session, and then adjournment.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for the pre-agenda meeting? I don't think we have time to go in closed session, so we can just take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 9 o'clock for the Rode County Commissioner meeting.